We are becoming more busy with COVID vaccinations at First District Health Unit. So as of today, we are at 46.7, one dose, at least one dose, in Ward County. That breaks out to be 32.8% of the 12 to 18-year-olds are vaccinated, 19 to 29, 37.4%, 30 to 39-year-olds, we have 44.1%, 40 to 49-year-olds, we have 54.8%, 50 to 59-year-olds, we have 61.5% vaccinated, 60 to 69-year-olds, 71.4%, 70 to 79-year-olds, 76%. And I don't think I jotted down the 80 and above, but as you can see, the older population has higher vaccination rates. So we are seeing, just based on foot traffic we're seeing in First District, we are seeing a lot more people, younger people, come in for vaccinations. So I guess with that, and the breakthrough cases, I was having trouble pulling this up. I'm often asked about that. I don't have county data on breakthrough cases, but I do have statewide data on the breakthrough cases. So of the cases, the percent vaccinated or in the hospital are point, yeah, the percent vaccinated that have been hospitalized is .04 to 3%. The percent vaccinated deaths are .00649%. So and breakthrough hospitalizations are 137. If you tuned into the press conference last week, I think that did a good job explaining the breakthrough cases, but there's always questions about that. No vaccine is perfect, nobody, and the virus is mutating and has a higher viral load than what we were seeing last year and is more contagious. But for the most part, it is keeping people alive and keeping them out of the hospital. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lisa, and I would certainly also recommend to anyone who has questions on those breakthrough cases or any other data, that press conference is available online through social media and I believe on YouTube. A quick, easy Google search can find that. Any questions for Ms. Klute at this time?
All right.
Thank you. We will certainly reach out if we have any further questions and probably look for some updates if our numbers continue to escalate into the fall similar to what they did last year.
Yes. What we're doing right now is, First District, I have it split into three primary areas focused on COVID. One is information, and that means we have people answering phone calls. And I don't care what all you do on media and so forth, sometimes people just need to talk to people. And so we have a lot of staff answering phone calls and moving them over to nurses. Some people don't have private, personal physicians, and so those are the people that can struggle with some of that, those advice. We are focused on testing and focused on COVID and flu vaccinations right now. So as situations change, we will probably call press conferences if it's needed.
Okay.
Continue to watch for that.
Thank you. Number four on our agenda is the mayor's report. I did have a number of different appointments and different activities throughout the month. I will go through this fairly briskly today. There it is. I did have four different home closings related to the acquisitions of homes for the flood control project. You'll note today, there was one of them that did not make it onto my list today. To note, on the fourth, there was an open meetings training. I did attend that virtually, as I know a number of people attended both in person and also online. Task Force 21, we did have a regular meeting aside from a special meeting on that. On the 11th, Lieutenant General Spellman from the Army Corps of Engineers was here for a visit, and this was in regards to what is currently going on with our flood control and also talking about the upcoming phases and really also putting another emphasis on really getting the Corps of Engineers with some dollars towards MI4 so we can get that, the project which is the Maple diversion moving farther along. That meeting was right here in council chambers. Did my best to pretend I was an auctioneer for the Great Tomato Festival. And then we did also have the 100th Memorial Anniversary for the Minot Police Department, Samuel Lee Faylor, who was killed in the line of duty. That was held at the Minot Auditorium. On the 16th, I did do a Zoom interview with the gentleman who is doing a COVID documentary that will be then later published down at the Historical Society in Bismarck, I believe. Alderwoman Evans perhaps participated in that as well. Just to note here, as I had mentioned at the end of our last regular meeting or special meeting, I can't remember which, we did have a complaint that came in for one of our constituents who happened to be an airman who was deployed over in Cutter. I did put that out there, and I did have a big helping hand with Lian Zeltinger, so one I had to acknowledge and say thank you to Lian for coming over and helping me for about three hours on the evening of the 18th, go through and cut all of those weeds. And then we did put a minor little post on there. And just to, I think, acknowledge how much support we have in the community and I think elsewhere around the country. Typically on my mayor's social media page, which I don't post often, gets about 240 people engaged. This had over 103,000 since that post. So a lot of great comments, but more importantly, thank you to the community that also it kind of acknowledged that support for our Minot Air Force folks that are deployed overseas. We did have on the 19th, the Minot Public School teacher welcome that I attended. Also on the 21st, then that Saturday, we had the interviews for the three different candidates for the airport director. Alderman Padugula participated in that. My job that day was giving a tour around Minot and talking about all the different things that are going on with our community. Then on the 24th, I did have a point of view interview with KVOY and then the Food Truck Festival emcee on the 29th. And then September 7th was the Community Economic Development Meeting this morning, and then also, as I mentioned, a home closing this morning as well. What I did not include were the 27 other meetings regarding city business and also phone calls, emails, social media, and staff interaction. So if anybody has any questions for any of my appointments or activities, I'd be more than happy. Alderwoman Evans.
I saw there was a special EDC meeting earlier in the month. Was there a specific topic, like what, it was not a regular one? It was a special one?
I'm gonna go back here. Are you talking about the Community Economic Development Meeting?
A special one? One of them said special. Let's go back, two more, Derek. I was just curious, what? One more?
Oh, the Chamber EDC Special Meeting.
Yeah. Was there a specific reason why a special meeting?
So typically when we have a special meeting regarding Chamber EDC, it has to do with what would have been MADC and contract talks when we're dealing with a different business and having to approve some of the either contracts or, you know, what terms within those contracts that we're negotiating. So as I can tell you, things are coming forward very quickly, and Chamber EDC will have something to announce in the very near future, but that's what was in reference to that special meeting.
Thank you.
So thank you for also pointing that out for clarification. I do have one appointment, I believe, here on our agenda that I will need, that I have up for consideration.
The move.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve.
Second.
Second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on motion to approve? Any discussion? Seeing none, motion is to approve, confirming Dean Leonard says the special assessment committee to the term expiring September 2027. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to our city manager's report. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Council. Before, I do have a couple of items I'm gonna ask some staff to come up and provide some information and presentation to the council and the public on, but before I do that, I want to give an opportunity to answer any questions the council has on the city manager memo that's included in the packet. There's several items outlined in there pretty extensively, but I think gives a good summary of issues that I and the staff have been working on over the last couple of weeks. Is there any questions or concerns on anything in the city manager report?
Any questions for a city manager on any of the attached information?
Okay. If not, then a couple of things I'd like to ask Dan, our Public Works Director, to come up and give an update on our flood mitigation project out here in front of City Hall, given that we had a recent letter to the editor in the newspaper on that and received some dialogue on that.
Good afternoon, Mr. Jonison.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a little update on the project out here. First of all, some background on it. You know, I know there's been some, I guess, concerns with no work going on. I assure you, I have weekly construction meetings with the contractor and the engineers, and every week there's updates on things going on. A little more background is, you know, what you see out the window here is just one small portion of that project. It's a relocation of an 18-inch water transmission line. It's a major line, like I said, a big deal, but that project is relocating a lot of major utilities that cross the future Maple diversion alignment. Our water transmission line, major sewer line, and with that, you know, the sewer work, borings under the railroad were done last year. They were delayed a little bit because we had to get the right permits from BNSF, get flaggers lined up, so that delayed the contractor about 45 days. He has made very good progress since that and even while that was going on by working on other portions of the project. Along with this, there's also a new sanitary lift station that's over 30 feet deep going in out here to replace the park lift because with the diverted sewer, new flow is coming in there, the lift station is too small. So he has actively been working on that. Again, you know, there has been some minor delays with COVID, getting some of the linings in for the vaults and things like that. When they were doing the bore out here, and I might add that the water line was bored underneath a good part of Second Avenue and Sixth Street so that those weren't closed completely. Had we chose to open cut that, those roads would have been blocked off completely for a long period of time. When he was doing the boring, we require them to pothole, locate all the utilities. They came across a major SRT duct bank that was right in line of the proposed bore, so we had to make modifications, bore deeper to make sure we didn't hit that. And with that, they ran into some large boulders because it's very sandy, cobbley area in here. So that did provide some delays, but like I said, the contractor has been actively working on all of this project. According to the contract, he has until June 24th of 2022 to complete this project. He's gonna have most of this work done by October 15th. So he is actually ahead of schedule even with the delays. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you or the council may have regarding the project.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions for Mr. Jonison regarding the underground directional boring in progress over here on the Maple? Just for our reference, Mr. City Manager, Mr. Jonison, did the individual in question who had indicated that there was no work being done ever reach out to the city to ask any of those pertinent questions?
Mr. Mayor, I never received any.
My office received no contact with regards to that. I will make a comment here because this isn't specific to this project, this is more in general regarding the city hiring contractors to do work as Mr. Jonison referred to, there's a deadline outlined in the contract for when that is to be completed by. And really until the contractor is in breach of that, the city has no real legal standing to go out and make workers be on site and work. And there's a multitude of reasons for why a contractor may or may not be on site. Sometimes they have several projects going on at the same time, and so they may take a break from a project to go work on another project, whether that's for the city or another client and those types of things, but really functionally and legally until they're in breach of not delivering the finished product by that date, the city really has no recourse to go out and say, you haven't had any workers out here for two weeks, we expect somebody to be out here working. So I think sometimes that's misunderstood in the public on how that contractual relationship works. But as Dan has aptly described here, the project is ahead of schedule, work continues to progress, and we're trying to get this done as quickly as we can, but make sure it's done right.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add too, just so everyone is aware, the water line is all in place. It's undergone the disinfection, the back T test that we're required to do. They're finishing the pressure testing on it now to make sure there's no leaks, and we hope to have it in service later this week, and then they can finish filling in the holes and putting the pavement in place. So the next two weeks, you should see, I guess, a lot more progress on the water main portion of it.
Thank you, Dan. And one last point here that I'll make is I did do two years of construction specifically in underground directional boring with exposed lines running comm line, is you have to have open holes if you are going around certain infrastructure to make sure as you are punching through that you're not coming in to make connections with whether it's that SRT line. So if you're running multiple lines, it's also a very good chance that hole or exposure might be open for a period of time while you're doing all of that underground boring. So that is why also why I asked whether anybody had contacted because a lot of times it's gonna be cleared up with a phone call rather than, well, other means. Alderwoman Evans.
I have a question, but not about that, but something else about the sinkhole in the collapsed pipe over by the fairgrounds. Okay, so I'm one of those people who goes to like worst-case scenario. Are we budget, like, so let's go to worst-case scenario that like is worse than we think. Are we budgetarily like ready if like the assessment comes back and it's worse than we think it is?
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, you know, I guess that'd maybe be a better question for finance. You know, I know we do have a good amount of cash reserves in our water and sewer account if we run into something like that. You know, we, I guess we can't always plan for everything.
Right.
You know, fortunately, you know, we were able to put in about a 15, 20-foot piece of pipe and take care of this, but we do intend to do some more investigation over the winter, some televising and jetting and look at the condition of the rest of that large pipe and possibly look at lining it. It won't be a cheap endeavor, so hopefully when we televise it, we'll see that most of the pipe is still in good shape. And you know, it was just this location where it goes from force main to gravity, it tends to churn up and make a lot more of the H2S gases, which will eat the pipe away quicker. So more to come, I guess, on that.
So the whatchamacallits, it's been fixed, we don't have the bypass pumps anymore? Like the bypass pumps are gone and we've repaired the?
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, yes. It's all been fixed, the bypass pumps are gone, it's filled in. The pavement is in place that we had to remove for the little portion going into the racetrack area, so it's.
Great work. I mean, I know your folks were out there getting that, like, you know, those pumps in and stuff quickly and, you know, mitigating what could have been a much more disastrous situation with sewer. So appreciate it and look forward to the televised look. Thank you, Dan.
Any further questions for Mr. Jonison at this time? Thank you, Dan.
Mr. Mayor, one more thing, just for the council's information, we have a project programmed in the CIP. It's, I guess, safety improvement at our low-head dam by the water treatment plant. We put out an RFQ for engineering services. We received two responses from that, one from Houston Engineering, one from Bar Engineering. And I would certainly love to have one or two members of the council sit on that selection committee if anybody would like to volunteer, you know, get ahold of me and let me know, and we'd be glad to have you sit on that selection process. I hope to get it completed in the next two weeks if I can. Said it should go fairly quick, it's only two proposals to review, so it shouldn't put you to sleep, but you know, if you do want something to put you to sleep, it might help.
And they can reach out to you via email. Does that work for you, Dan?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mark. Dan, do you know when it's, do you have it scheduled?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, I don't. Like I said, we just got the RFQs in last week, so you know, I'd like to try get them reviewed in the next week to 10 days and then set up interviews if we need to.
Okay. You can put me down, just let me know when and I'll make it work.
Agreed.
And we'd look to any of the other council then to follow up with an email if you are interested. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, I'd like to ask our finance director, Dave Lakefield, to come and talk to you about a couple of things. First one being is an update on application of our special assessment district this year. First one being is an update on application of our special assessment district this year, and a condition that arose with that. And then secondly, later on in the agenda, the council will be taking some action with regards to some bonding, and in the process of doing that, we had to go through a Moody's rating review, and I thought that this provides an opportunity to provide some good insight to the council and to the public of how well Minot is doing financially, I think it gives a good overview, but to also provide you some insight on how these rating agencies look at us as an organization, as a community. That's some work done behind the curtain sometimes that I don't think that you and the public get to see sometimes. So I asked Dave to be prepared to briefly go over that presentation, I mean, it was probably a good hour and a half-long presentation, and we're not going to take that time tonight, but I think a brief overview of that would be beneficial to the council and the public.
Mr. Lakefield.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We were scheduled to have a civil service commission meeting last week to approve our specialist, or, I'm sorry, not civil service, special assessment commission. We only had two members of that three-member committee, because one of the members had moved out of town and was no longer eligible to be a member. The day that the special assessment commission was to meet, one of the other members was sick and was unable to participate, so we had to reschedule that special assessment commission meeting. State law is very specific about the timing, the notice to the special assessment area, and the timing for that special assessment commission to meet and hear any protests, and then also specific for the time that we have to take that to the city council. So with the postponement of that meeting, we had to start the process all over again and send out the notice to all of the folks involved in the special assessment area, give them the 15-day notice, and set up the commission meeting, and then the council has to, it can't be any sooner than 15 days for the council to act on it. And then we run into the time crunch of getting these special assessments over to the county and certified so they can be included on the tax statements. So with this postponement, it set us back a couple of weeks, and so we're looking at potentially doing a special council meeting in October. So I think the discussion we wanted to have is what time would work best for that. I would anticipate that that meeting would be relatively quick. You know, we could do it on a lunchtime, or if we wanted to stick with a Monday at 5:30, or how we wanted to handle that. I think that we wanted to have a little bit of discussion so we can get that in place and noticed as soon as possible.
Well, I would look to the council as whether or not a noon or a 5:30. I know there has been some, a little bit of heartburn in the past from some folks, constituents having a special meeting in the middle of the day, as not everybody's able to get away, but then also on the afternoons, I guess it's six of one, half and dozen of the other. So I'd look to see if anybody has a problem with a 5:30 or a noon, which one would be better.
Or we could, could we do like early on a regular meeting? Like, is it going to be more than half an hour? Like, could we do a 5 o'clock?
I think what Mr. Lakefield's talking about is prior to our next regular meeting, is we need to have a meeting prior to that.
Oh, so before October 4th?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, actually, we were looking at perhaps October 11th, because of the timeframe required here, we have to have it at least 15 days elapsed between the special assessment commission meeting and the council meeting. So we wouldn't have enough time to have it on the agenda for the October 4th meeting, and if we push it back to October 18th, then it delays that information getting over to the county and puts them in a bind. And I do see that October 11th is Columbus Day. I don't know that that's a holiday for us, so October 11th would be available.
I would look to perhaps maybe just 5:30 in the afternoon then, and then we can keep it out of regular business hours, and we won't have to put too much extra time on staff as well, anticipating a short meeting then, if that will work.
Do you have to make a motion for that?
No, we can have, we can just have it called as a special meeting and noticed.
Okay, and if Derek will open up our presentation, I'm going to go through, I think there's about 50 slides on this presentation we did to Moody's for our bond rating call. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail here, I just wanted to go through, and Mr. Stewart wanted us to go through and kind of highlight the process on the types of things that we go through and the questions that we get asked when these ratings companies are taking a look at issuing a rating for our debt. This is a pretty important thing for the city. Fortunately, we're able to maintain our credit rating for Moody's, and that's important because that directly impacts the rates that we get on this debt. All right. I'm just going to skip through some of these really quick. Typically, we give some background information on the city, population, what our budget looks like, you know, background on our economy and sectors that are most impacted, our geographical location, square miles, population, organizational chart of the city. So a lot of just background information, experience on the administrative staff within the city, so how long they've been in their position, how long they've been with the city, that's all important when these rating agencies are looking at the stability of the management of the city. Background on our organizational structure, and then some of the financial impact of the post-flood grants the city received, including the first and the second allocation as well as NDR, and what the city has used those funds for. Some background on the funding from the state water commission. This year, we took a little bit different approach to our funding request for the issuance of bonds. The environment that we found ourselves in last year after we issued the first round of debt for flood control, we were, you know, rethinking our strategy afterwards when the rates came in as low as they were. So this year, you know, we're a little bit cautious and a little bit more aggressive in our approach, because, you know, we start to hear words like inflation creeping into the discussion, and typically, when we see inflationary period, the Fed controls that inflation by restricting the money supply, which means higher interest rates. So, you know, our risk here is that the interest rate won't go down in the next couple of years, that it'll go up, and when we start talking about 30-year bonds, even, you know, 10 or 15 basis points makes a huge difference over the life of those bonds. So this year, we took the approach that we looked at what we had left over in state-allocated funding for portions of the flood control from the last biennium that we hadn't spent yet, as well as what was appropriated in the current biennium, and we calculated out what the local share would be, and that's what we used as our target for the bonding. So, we issued, I think it was just short of $43 million worth of bonds for flood control that sold on the market today, and, you know, that was where we came up with that number. So if interest rates go up in the next year or two, we've at least locked in that rate on that portion of the project. And just talking about the state water fund, allocation of the funding, and what it's used for. We did talk about some of the flood control projects that have been completed. We had some video and drone shots from the Public Works Department that showed the progress, and actually, our rating person for Moody's was very appreciative of that, so they could see what the project really looked like and what had been accomplished to date. It helped to put it in perspective for them as well. The congratulations for the opening of the earlier phases of the flood control that have been completed. We talked a lot about the economic development and our relationship with the Minot Air Force Base and how that impacts our economy and, you know, gives us some diversity, but also the economic impact that that has there in the stability and how long that mission has been around. Talked about a number of the projects currently underway in our community that are adding additional housing or commercial space, and the Blue on Broadway project was one of the projects that we highlighted. We also talked about the project up at Fourth Avenue North Broadway. Magic City Discovery Center, we included them, they're an important addition to our community. We also talked about Trinity Hospital's new site and the investment that they are making in our community as well. Some additional expansions of businesses in the community. The airport plays an important part in our economic diversity in the city. And we talked about the population growth, highlighted some of these demographics and statistics for the last several years. And again, I'm just going through these rather quickly, it took us several hours on the rating call, so. Things like unemployment rates, you know, what the market looks like in the city is important. You know, a fully-employed, diverse economic group with expanding development means security for investors or bondholders that are investing in the city. This was the funding formula that we threw in there, we had this in last year's slide. The point we were trying to make here is that the city of Minot does get some significant funding from the state through the Hub City formulation, and when that was redone last legislative session, it added some security or the funding buckets, some of them fill first before any other buckets get funding, so it essentially allows the Hub City cities to get some of that funding before other projects are funded with the gross production tax. So when crude oil went to negative dollars during the height of COVID, we saw a decrease in what we're getting in Hub City money, but it didn't totally dry up. Sales tax collections, this is very important, because we rely directly on sales tax collections to service the debt that we're issuing for flood control. So we went through, you know, what the sales tax can be used for, as well as historical collections, and where we're at year-to-date with that as well. Again, relatively stable, the last 12 months, 12 rolling months collection, about $10.9 million per penny. The last 10 years, we've exceeded, we've been at over $10 million per penny, and through June, we were about 12.35% higher than the previous year. So, again, solid numbers for us, even with a lot of uncertainty in the economy in the last year, the sales taxes performed rather well. Again, just some more statistics on the sales tax and what it's allocated for. Assess property values are important as well, we want to see those be stable or continue to grow, and that directly affects the city's ability to raise funds through other methods other than sales tax. That's always important as a fallback to be able to service this debt. Building permit activity, again, just highlights some of the growth, and some of those spikes were related to the Trinity Hospital project skewing our numbers a little bit. We talked a lot about our budget process and how we go through things in the process that we do, and how we calculate some of the numbers that we use in our budget process, and go through that, have some discussion about our approach, including the use of reserves and how much we have in cash reserves with the city. This just shows our total budget for the year and the allocations of where it's going. Again, operating budgets for the last several years. First was general fund and airport, and then water sewer, storm sewer. We also talked about NOS Northwest Area Water Supply, and where this is important in this bond rating call is it's a significant investment the city is making that also uses sales tax revenues to fund it. So a portion of that second penny sales tax is allocated to NOS currently. When that funding is completed, that allocation will go away, and the other allocations of the sales tax will be, go back to their full amount. So that's important when we look at this, you know, how long do we anticipate reallocating those funds to NOS, as well as what the effect of the completion of that project will have on our ability to grow the city. We talked about pension and other post-employment benefits, and you know, the city addressed their unfunded pension liability a number of years ago, closed the defined benefit plan and amortized that unfunded liability over a period of 30 years, and they are basically paying off that unfunded liability. So that is in place, it has been addressed, and that's something that they look at as well. Our investment policy, this is something we touched on. The city's investment policy is limited by state law and what we can invest our funds in. Bottom line is, it needs to be a fully insured product, or there needs to be a pledge of securities. You know, the safety of the principal is paramount when we're using public funds, and that's governed by state law. Our capital improvement plan, this is something that was formalized or made a little bit more formal here a few years ago, and just looking at what we have planned for large projects in the next five-year horizon, and explaining some of the differences or what's accounted in that, and just going into some additional detail on what's included in that CIP, and as you can see here, we had, you know, just over 57 million was allocated for flood control. We talked about how debt is issued in the city, as well as the debt limit for the city, and what our current debt burden is and per capita debt. Again, forward-looking at what some of the outstanding debt will be after the issuance of the current bond sale. And this is the refunding improvement bonds, the Series 2021A, including some paving utility districts that we have coming up. And the second, the 2021B was for the flood control bonds. These were preliminary numbers that we had estimated at the time, and we just talked about our schedule. Here's where we brag ourselves up a little bit, you know, we try to be humble, but we would need to point out these things, and it's important that we get that across. I think we have done a pretty good job at maintaining or managing debt levels. The city has made a very conscious effort not to issue any general obligation bonds. Last year was the first time since I had come on board in 2017 that we issued any bonds, so it hadn't, we hadn't issued any bonds at all for several years, and last year, we issued some debt for special assessments and the first round of flood control bonds, and that's the same thing that we did this year. We had a smaller special assessment issuance, and then a larger amount for flood control. Next year, the only debt that we anticipate issuing will be related to some special assessment districts that we have in the works. We don't anticipate issuing any flood control bonds next year. And that was it. So we condensed about an hour and a half, or hour and 45 minutes into a few minutes, so. The bottom line with this is, last year, our special assessment debt was rated AA2 for Moody's, which is the highest rating a city our size can get, and our flood control bonds were issued AA3, which is one small step down from that. Again, a very good credit rating. The reasoning behind the AA3 rating on those bonds was the additional debt that is anticipated to be issued in the future, so that's why it had a slight downgrade, so to speak, from the AA2 rating, but still a very good credit rating, had a lot of interest in the bond issuance, and we did have that, those bids today. The special assessment district came in at 0.886906% true interest cost on a 10-year special assessment district, so less than 1%, a very good rate. The flood control bonds, we issued 30-year bonds, and the true interest cost on that is 2.99663%. So, just under, just under 2.3%. Again, a very good rate that we had. I think when we were doing some of these projections here several years ago, we were using, I think, 3.5% for a 20-year bond, so to get down to 2.3% on a 30-year bond is a tremendous shot in the arm for that. So it helps us out tremendously, millions of dollars in decreased interest cost, so it's a good time to get that. So it's a good time to get that locked in. And we can also then say that we have our money in hand for our local share for the money that's been allocated for us in this legislative session.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Any questions regarding any of the information? And we do have a deeper, we do have the opportunity for a deeper dive here in 8.4 regarding the issuance as that comes up in our individual items a little bit later, too. Well, great work on that, Mr. Lakefield, and to the rest of the staff as well. 2.29 on a 30-year note, again, back 2018 when we were doing those projections seemed like a long shot at best, if not unrealistic. Mr. City Manager, did you have anything further in your report?
No, I just want to reiterate that, you know, this is a result of sound fiscal practices over the years. You know, we're demonstrating basically what the risk is to investors when they purchase these bonds and whether or not we're a safe investment or not and whether or not we'll have the ability to pay that back. And I think that's demonstrated well. And again, you're benefiting from one of the best ratings that you can have in a community this size, which translates into lower interest rates and better cost savings for the public. We'll make one more statement, though, here, and that is with regards to reserves because we've talked about this a little bit through the budget process as well. You're trying to find balance there that you can't have too little, but you can't have too much either because they start asking questions, well, why do you have so much money? And are you saving it for something? What's that going for in the future? And so we do try to meet that balance in the middle where we have finances for emergencies, just like Alderwoman Evans was referring to earlier with regards to sewer main replacement and those types of things. We do need money on hand to fix those things when those things happen. But at the same time, we need to make sure the taxpayer dollar is being put to work and we're not just sitting on it for no reason. So. I think staff and council and the community as a whole have done a great job in this respect. I think it's very smart and intelligent to do the work we're doing on refunding and refinancing a lot of these bonds at lower interest rates because that represents a significant savings to the community over the long run. And I think that's just good, smart fiscal management. So I have nothing further unless council has anything else to ask with regards to City Manager Report, otherwise we can move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Any final questions, Alderwoman Evans?
So, Mr. Stewart, in your report on page one, you talked about, in your paragraph on COVID, that your office and staff would benefit from council discussing and determining whether an emergency order should be instated again, or at least what process should follow? Because if that was not done, then the Civil Service Commission Authority would kick in. I'm wondering if you can explain the difference between those two things and if you and the staff have a preference for a particular avenue?
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans. We've been having some conversation with regards to the impacts of COVID to our organization. And I want to be clear that we're not talking about COVID protocols or policies for the community as a whole. We're talking specifically about the organization and the employees of the City of Minot. So as we've had some conversation, we've had some cases within our employees that we continue to be concerned about. We're in a position where we're offering community services, services that the public relies on heavily for us to continue to provide and provide reliably. Given some of the increase in active cases amongst our employees, we've had some discussion whether or not we need to go back to reinstituting some protocols that we had previously in place for city employees. The two, and there's two processes to that. One is either the council declares an emergency order and that gives the mayor some power and authority to implement personnel policies with regards to these issues going forward or the ordinance calls for the Civil Service Commission to weigh in on that. I, as a city manager, do not have authority to set personnel policies unilaterally for the organization. Any policy I would like to put into place has to go through review and approval of the Civil Service Commission. So we had not had any conversation with the council with regards to the new uptick in numbers and the new phase of COVID coming through our community and through our organization. And so this was just kind of an opportunity of what process do we need to go through? Whether or not there is any willingness on the part of the council to reinstitute an emergency order or whether we need to try and go through the process with the Civil Service Commission to get these temporary policies in place so that we can continue to provide critical services to our community going forward.
Alderwoman Evans?
As a follow-up, I don't know if, but what would, tell me what it looked like if it was the Civil Service Commission? Like, would that hinder your ability to quickly respond? Like, what would that look like? Because I haven't seen that happen since I've been in office.
Well, we'd have to call a meeting in the Civil Service Commission and we'd have to provide a recommendation of a policy, which would be talking probably a temporary policy on, you know, whether our management team felt necessary to implement mask ordinance, or not ordinance, mask mandate for all employees while you're working in the work environment, you're required to wear a mask. So we'd have to develop that policy then and take it. And it wouldn't go into implementation until the Civil Service Commission approves it. I don't have the authority as a city manager to unilaterally put that policy into place, even on a temporary basis.
So do you and your management team, have you talked about a preference? Like, is, which avenue is, would be a better?
The quicker route and the more adaptable route is for an emergency order put in place by the council and have the mayor have the authority to do that. Without that, we have to abide by the ordinance in place, which is the Civil Service Commission, which means we have to go through that process. We've scheduled a special meeting and whatever process that delays the response time out.
Alderwoman Evans, I would also, I'll come back to you here for a second. One notion, too, is that it would require an emergency declaration. And there isn't, to at least my knowledge, another community in North Dakota yet that has an emergency declaration in place. Because there are some caveats that come along with that emergency declaration as we all went through last time around. Alderwoman Evans?
And because the state has not declared one, I think our ordinance would mean we'd have to re-approve it every seven days, correct? We didn't have to do that, my understanding is, last year because North Dakota had one in place. But maybe Ms. Hendershot can?
And Alderwoman Evans, too, the state legislature also passed century code changes last year that also requires the reauthorization. And I can't remember if it's every 14 days or every seven days, but Ms. Hendershot?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, our city ordinance refers to state law for declaring an emergency, but the mayor is authorized under our ordinance and state law to declare a local disaster or emergency. And the city council has to approve that declaration, otherwise it expires after 30 days. And once the city council approves it, it can be terminated at any time that the council determines it's necessary.
So, Mr. Mayor, how do you, I mean, I just want to have a discussion sort of about this so we're not, like, caught, you know, sort of in the middle of a public health crisis and Mr. Stewart doesn't have what he needs. What are your feelings about?
My feelings on this is that to declare an emergency at this point, given the information that even Ms. Klut provided tonight, while we're seeing the numbers increase, could very well send the wrong message out to the public in terms of, I think, just general state of the community. And emergency declaration does also have a lot of other, I think, strong undertones with it that can be misinterpreted by many. Put short, I think it would put a lot more people on edge and not to say that we don't need to be careful and mindful as we see our folks with Minot Air Force Base on HBCon Bravo because of the spread of the coronavirus. And of course, they have a little different set mission, although we do have health and safety officials, first responders, some even right in our midst tonight. But I would be remiss if I didn't say I'd be very, very cautious about jumping into an emergency declaration. And I would prefer to see it go through the Civil Service Commission at this point.
And I think I tend to agree, just letting Mr. Stewart know if things change, you know, drastically, you know, we can call a special meeting and revisit this. That's how sort of I feel is, like, I'm very open to, you know, calling, you know, as quickly as we could, a special meeting if, you know, the Civil Service Commission route is going to be too hindering to you and your staff.
If something were to change in the, let's just say, in the situation, it very well, any two aldermen or alderwomen can call a special meeting or the city manager or myself. So there is that option. Mr. Stewart, at this point, I think we would leave it up to you and your management team at this point unless the council feels that things are heading in a different direction much more quickly. Unless there's anyone else from the council that has any more to say on it. Okay.
I have the information. I just wanted you to know that we're paying attention to it. We're looking at it and exploring all avenues and will continue to do so.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions for the city manager? If not, we can move to the city attorney's report. We do have an attached file here with all of the different activities. Good evening now, Ms. Hendershot.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I submitted a written report and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for our city attorney?
Thank you.
Thank you. Back in our agenda, we are on number seven. This is the consent items. We do have 18 different items within our consent agenda for the public that would be watching. All the items on the agenda would be passed with recommendations by staff if remaining on consent. Are there any individual items that need to be pulled for individual discussion? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Pittner to approve, second by Alderman Ross. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve all items on consent. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraigola?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to section eight of our agenda. These are the action items. The first is a public hearing, building relocation requests to 121554th Avenue Southeast. Again, a public hearing to consider the request by Sheldon Schneider to relocate a single-family residence from 222 16th Street Southeast Minot, also known as the Lenox Park Edition Lot 68 to 121554th Avenue Southeast in Minot, also known as Outlet 4 Southeast, southeast of the southeast, less west, 122 feet east, 183 and .35 feet to the Port A South, Section 1, rather, 15483, subject to the conditions that are outlined in the documents. Again, this is a public hearing. For anyone to come forward and speak, either in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the recommendations before the council. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Janser?
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing and approve the item.
Second?
Motion by Alderman Janser to close the public hearing and approve the item is recommended, second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraigola?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.2 is the approval of hiring recommendations for the airport director position. City Manager Harold Stewart is asking the city council to support his recommendation to hire Jennifer Ekman as the new director of the Minot International Airport after a nationwide search process. Ms. Ekman's salary will be $126,049 annually and she will start employment in her new position October 4, 2021. The recommendations to the council was to approve the city manager to hire Jennifer Ekman as the new airport director for the Minot International Airport.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Pittner to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ross. Discussion on the motion. Alderman Padraigola?
Thank you. I wanted to speak as a member of the selection committee or the recommendation committee and inform the public that the committee did a very careful job looking at candidates. This was one of the best hiring processes I've ever been involved with. The consulting firm gave us three highly qualified candidates. We had a very structured, detailed, lengthy interviewing process. One of the highlights of which I think actually was the fact that the mayor got involved and gave each of the candidates a very nice tour of the city. And I think that says something about the priority we put on the airport and finding a good candidate and getting them acclimated to the community and making sure they're aware of what they're getting themselves into in terms of the community. And I really wanted to personally thank Sean for taking Saturday morning off to do that. That, I think, is really important. We spent, I think, a couple hours talking about debating each of the candidates, their strengths, their weaknesses. We tried to do our best to be candid with the city manager in terms of what we saw, what we heard. And I didn't see the final ratings, but we each submitted a rating sheet and then he and the HR director compiled those and looked through them. And that's the outcome. So as far as I'm concerned, the process was just excellent. Obviously, we can't guarantee the outcome, but I was very, very impressed with this. And I think the candidates received a very positive impression of the community and of the city administration. And I'm very hopeful that this hire will turn out well. We all put a lot of effort into it and we certainly are confident and hopeful.
Any other discussion on the motion to approve? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraigola?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 8.3 is amend the chapter, amend chapter 535 of the city code of ordinances. The total number of available retail liquor licenses granted by the city council of Minot is limited by the city's population. The official 2020 United States census determined that Minot has a population of 48,377 residents, meaning the city can use, can issue 32 retail liquor licenses. City currently has 28 retail liquor licenses in operation, so city staff is working on the process to grant four additional licenses. The recommendation to the city council is to pass an ordinance on first reading amending the city code of ordinances, chapter 535 pertaining to the exceptions to the limitations of the number of licenses.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Evans. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Alderman Pittner?
Thank you, Mayor. And just so that I'm clear, from my conversation with the staff, this isn't allowing us, we have the authority now that we have the updated census information. This is just allowing us to add some provisions within the agreement to individuals that purchase liquor licenses. Is that correct?
We'll ask our city attorney for clarification and perhaps even on process on how this would look with four additional licenses. Ms. Hendershot?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, yes, what Alderman Pittner described is correct. The census results revealed that we would have four additional liquor licenses for the city if the council chooses to issue those licenses. It is up to the council's discretion. So Kelly Matelka did some research into this and found that we haven't ever actually bid them off to her findings because there have always been annexed liquor licenses that take first priority when we get a new license. And so there actually hasn't ever resulted in a bidding process for the licenses. We also looked at what other cities have done when they've bid off liquor licenses and a number of other communities do include some conditions like minimum bid amounts and requirements that the license be used in some sort of operation within one year. And then they limited transferability within that first year of operation as well. When we looked at our ordinance, those additional conditions didn't seem to be included in the bid process or auction process. And so what we have proposed and presented tonight is a modification to our ordinance which allows for the bidding or auctioning of new licenses, assuming that the city council moves in the direction to issue those four new licenses. And what we have included in the language is that the city council can include, excuse me, additional conditions in the bid advertisement or auction advertisement, which could include those minimum bid requirements or any other conditions that the council deemed appropriate with regard to the new licenses. So assuming that this is the direction the council wants to go, this would be approved on first reading tonight, on second reading at the next meeting, and then the council could move forward in issuing the advertisement for bids or auction, whichever the council deems. issuing the advertisement for bids or auction, whichever the council deems appropriate. And staff would then advertise those and follow that process.
Alderman Pittner, do you have any follow-up?
No follow-up questions, but I do have some comments. So if anybody else has questions.
Does anyone else have a question for our city attorney while she is at the podium? Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. So the reason I wanted to make sure that this was clear because I misunderstood it when I first read the memo and I thought it was just pertaining to us being allowed to sell four more liquor licenses. I wanted to make sure we take time now that we're able to have some caveats built into these liquor licenses that we take full advantage of that before we do issue them, if we choose to issue them. We don't have to. That once we pass this on second reading, if it passes tonight and gets to a second reading, that we look at some of these, some of these requirements that we tie to these liquor licenses. Right now, I'll use a prime example. Last year, we had a liquor license from Marketplace Foods that came back to us, was about to expire because it hadn't been used in one year. They opened for a few days and then their timeline reset. That's not getting the full use out of these liquor licenses. That's a loophole in the system. It's abusing the system, in my opinion. And I think it gives us an opportunity to ensure that these liquor licenses are used to their full potential. If we're going to limit them, we want to make sure that they're used and they're used to their fullest potential. So I would like to see us just maybe from staff, a director from staff, and I'd love to be involved in it, the process of having some of these limitations or expectations from these liquor licenses when they're built into these contracts and built into these when they are sold off, that these assets aren't abused and we make sure we're getting the full potential out of them. So again, I just want to be mindful that when we do go to sell these, we have some of these items built in so that, again, citizens, and again, we should almost advertise them, we should almost advertise these liquor licenses so that new business owners that want to come to the table and have time to put a business plan together, that have time to secure funding from financial institutions, they have an opportunity to do that. I wouldn't like to see this done personally until at least the beginning of 2022. But I'll put that out there and again, my thoughts.
Other comments or discussion? 2016, I sat on the committee that went through and did a tremendous amount of outreach to the community and then discussion with all of the liquor license holders that wanted to come in, provide information and data as we had talked about overhauling the liquor licenses at that time. Of course, we were looking to 2020 as the year that we would see potentially more licenses come online, which absolutely they are. And also at a point of trying to address the cost at that time, I think liquor licenses were selling anywhere from three to four, $450,000 for that license. And that was just the license itself, not the business. Since that time, we've seen that price point come down quite a bit and with more of those come down. I would like to see them, I would like to see them out and available, seeing as the 2020 census has already been delayed many, many, many months and available for businesses before 2022, in my opinion, if we can come to an agreement on what some of those limitations or what some of those rules and regulations should look like. We'll also have to have the discussion if that's only for these four or for all of those licenses, because if it is an ordinance change that is specific to those, can create problems for staff in trying to keep track of which licenses have limitations or further restrictions than others. And that's something that we also identified when we did some of the research back in 2016. Some of the communities had some grandfathered licenses while others came online with other rules. So we should be mindful of whatever it is under consideration in those regards. But I will support the motion to approve on this for tonight. Any other discussion? Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Eight point four is the 2021 bond resolutions for 2021A and 2021B. The three bond issuances will be as follows. Series 2021A bonds will be used to finance various special assessment projects within the city. And two, the series 2021B will be to finance the various flood control projects within the city, for the city, rather. The bonds being used by the city are going to be listed for sale and require the resolutions to be signed in order to authorize the sale. The recommendation to the council is authorize the mayor to sign the 2021A refunding bond resolution and 2021B sales tax revenue bonds resolution for the construction paving district 499, paving and utility district 2021-1, and the continuation of flood control. The bonds will be sold by the city of, by the city on Tuesday, September 7, which is today, 2021, requiring this resolution to be signed. Motion by Alderman Janser to approve, second by Alderman Pittner. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Seeing none, the motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to eight point five. Public hearing for the 2022 preliminary annual budget. Pursuant to the North Dakota State Century Code 40-40-08, the city of Minot is required to conduct a public hearing of protests and objections to any items or amounts set forth in the preliminary budget. So at this point, I would open up the floor to anyone who would want to come forward and speak on the annual 2022 proposed budget. For any folks that might be watching on social media, YouTube, Facebook, right now we have two media members and staff sitting inside council chambers and don't have any other residents of Minot. So I will ask one more time, this is a public hearing, for anyone to come forward to speak either in favor, in opposition, or just give us their thoughts on the 2022 budget. Seeing none, I would look to the council for their recommendations on this item. Alderman Pittner.
Mayor, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt and amend the proposed budget to the fully funded option, city manager option presented at our budget workshop with a final mill levy of 121.1.
Motion by Alderman Pittner to close the public hearing and recommendation of the fully funded 121.1. Our finance director, Mr. Lakefield, is coming to the podium perhaps for some clarification before I go for a second.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what is included in your packet for the ordinance is reflective of the city manager's revised proposal, the fully funded option. But I think the calculation still comes out to about 121.29 mils. So just a clarification. And again, just a reminder that that's an estimate using our estimated values. And when those credits are applied, there's going to be some differences in the final mill rate as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lakefield. Let's look to the motion maker for clarification. You just stated a little different mill levy. So for the fully funded, if you were talking 121.1, we would be looking for the approximate 121.9.
121.9?
2.9.
2.9, sorry.
I'm going from slide 32, 33 from our budget workshop.
Okay.
The option that was provided.
Okay, that is the motion. We have a motion of close the public hearing with the fully funded 121.29. Is there a second?
I'll second it so we can talk about it.
No, it was one, I think you're going from council president Olson's recommendation is 121.29, correct?
Correct. What is your call on the?
Mine is from the city manager's proposed options from our budget workshop, which is a total cut of $638,362. I don't know if there's confusion there. Maybe Dave wants to.
I need the mill levy rate or?
121.10, right? Is this the one?
121.10.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when those estimates were being done, some of those positions had other funding mechanisms in them as well. So when we put all of the revised items into the budget using Mr. Stewart's recommendation, the calculation came out slightly different than what the slide is.
Oh, okay.
So again, it's 121.29. That is the city manager's revised recommendation with the fully funded positions.
Back to the motion maker for clarification.
What was last year's mill levy? What is our goal to maintain a flat mill levy?
Mr. Lakefield.
Just don't leave, Dave.
Mayor, Alderman Pittner, last year's proposed mill levy was 121.29.
Okay. Motion maker agrees.
We have a motion for the 121.29. I need to look to the second to see if he is agreeable.
He said, sure.
Okay, sorry, I did not hear that. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Public hearing is closed. I would look to the council for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderwoman Olson.
So I think it's going to help clarify it for me if we're talking positions, because the 18 added positions seem to be the biggest sticking point for all of us. So for Alderman Pittner, you are considering adding two dispatch positions, one plumbing position and two bus drivers, and then the part-time to full-time positions for non-careers. Is that, are we talking the same slide, sir?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, okay.
There we go.
A slide.
Thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Okay. And I guess, Mr. Mayor, what I would say, you know, I used that as a recommendation in the letter that I did submit to all of you as well as to the media. And I did add a few more positions and had a very, very slight increase. And so I guess I think that that should be considered as well, too. So I would like to have that discussion as well. I would offer amendment at some point, but I would like to at least have my letter and my recommendations considered because it is such a slight increase.
For the public's, just one moment here.
Oh, sorry.
For the public's understanding as well, Alderwoman Olson, what are those positions and associated mill cost with that? I've got it, but just for the record.
Yes, I have a few papers up here, but I'm looking here as well. And maybe perhaps Derek has made a slide. I'm not completely sure. So in the recommendations that I have suggested, it would be the police department, computer forensics technician, two dispatchers, a plumbing inspector, mechanic, property maintenance senior, and then the non-career positions going part-time to full-time. And the increase on that, I believe, is 121, or the mill levy would be 121.49. So it is a very slight increase over last year's.
Okay. And that was just a clarification for, I think, the public, for anybody who might be watching at home.
Yes.
Seeing as none of the public is here. Alderwoman Evans.
So can I make a motion on her?
If you want to make a motion to amend, you can. Because we already have a main motion.
I'd like to make a motion to amend to reflect the recommendations made by our city council president.
We have a motion to amend for the recommendations that were also, that were just outlined and also included in the packet. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Padraig Gula. Discussion on the motion to amend. Any further discussion? Alderwoman Olson.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In considering these positions, I felt that some of them are cost savings positions. I think specifically the mechanic, adding that position, I think, is a priority for us because an added mechanic saves us money. So they virtually pay for their own position and just in the savings that we see. We know that some, such as the dispatcher positions, are partially funded through the city and the county, so we know that we're not paying their full salary. We've had recommendations from our city staff on the positions that they felt were very important, and all of those things are being reflected here. We just know that there's a need going into 2022, and I feel that these positions are necessary. And again, the increase is so slight. I know we can't say exactly what it is because we're not to the very end of the year, but indications are that that might be less than a dollar increase on $100,000 property per year. It's pretty slight.
Alderwoman Evans.
And just for clarification, these are fully funded versus partially funded, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Alderman Janser.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to support this amendment because I think there are a couple of important things here. I think that the computer forensics technician in the police department is a significant need. Practically every crime investigation these days involves at least one cell phone, if not several. And so in order for the police department to do its job and have the evidence to take these cases to court, that's an extremely important position in my mind. I agree with Alderman Olson that a couple of these positions, like the mechanic, are probably cost-effective in terms of keeping our equipment running and keeping our light equipment or heavy equipment operators out there doing their jobs. The dispatchers, because they're partially funded by another organization, I think merit consideration. So I'm able to support this amendment. And I think it goes the right length of trying to do as much as we can without going too far. So I'll be voting in favor of the amendment.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I can appreciate the motion. I can appreciate the positions. I think all the positions that Alderwoman Olson includes with the amendment are needed, are beneficial to the city. I think they provide and enhance services that we can provide. I just think with some of the other challenges that our community is facing, I want to hold the line on with a flat mill levy. I know that that foregoes some positions and it foregoes some improvements to our staff. I get that. I'm not, that doesn't, I'm not deaf to that. I hear that loud and clear. But when I think of our community as a whole, and we talk about holding the line personally, myself, and doing what's needed, I want to set a good example from the city of Minot. But again, these are not foolish investments into our staff or into our organization. I get that these, our organization needs these positions to improve services. But I think as our community as a whole, looking with some of our other entities, our other taxing entities, I want to be a good partner. I want to be a good steward. I've been critical of some of them in the past. And I want to give them the best chance to succeed in some of those items that I've been critical of them on. So I think for me to sleep well at night, I need to maintain my proposal. So I won't vote for the amendment. But again, I understand, these are not bad investments into our people and into our staff and into our services provided. So I want to hold the line, so I will not be voting for the amendment.
Further discussion on the motion to amend. Alderman Padraig Gula.
Right. I understand the need to be frugal. I mean, we're not out of the woods yet with COVID and the economy still is a little bit shaky, not nearly shaky as it was a year ago, not nearly as frightening the situation is now. My original inclination was to go with what was proposed in the city manager's proposed budget of one point, excuse me, 123.57 mils and a total of 18 positions. 18 is one that carries sticker shock. So having listened to the different points of view and the different alternatives here, I think Lisa's proposal, you know, is the reasonable compromise. I think it's critical that we have dispatchers in the police department. I agree with Mark. It's critical we have an evidence technician. I think some of the other positions, as Lisa's been saying, can be delayed a bit. For example, Trinity will be done with their hospital in December, at least they hope, December of next year. But they've also told us that they don't intend to have it fully operational, probably not until the following spring. So I think that takes some of the pressure off of the bus drivers. I agree that we, it'd be nice if we could expand routes, but I don't see that as being something we need immediately. something we need immediately. I would have liked to have had more of these positions, but again, I, I think that Lisa's proposal is a reasonable compromise. The two that I want to particularly mention, though, are the public safety positions, a public information officer for the police department. I've had extensive discussions regarding that with several staff, and I believe that we do need such a position. I do have significant reservations about delegating it and allocating it solely to the police department, even a sharing of police and fire. And I think the council needs to have a more careful look at this. I personally would favor adding a public information officer and delegating most of their work time to the safety services, particularly the police. But I think of one of the concerns there is having somebody always available, which I think they need to be. I think that would better serve that goal by augmenting our public information office. But again, I think that's a policy discussion we need to have, and we need to work on that with the city manager. The other position I think that calls for more discussion and debate is that of the fire captain, which would be a training officer. We are going to have a new station come online within the next couple of years. We're going to be hiring three or four firefighters. I think obviously we need more training. But I think there have been some significant changes in the organizational structure of the fire department. We've gotten rid of the assistant chief's position, and I think that's something the council needs to become more involved in and work out a consensus with the city manager and with the fire chief. So I think those, those two positions need more development and more care in terms of specifying, you know, how they should be filled and when, and what the exact range of duty should be, particularly for the PIO, the public information officer. So those I normally would put on the table, but I, again, I think they need more development. I think they need more thinking. So that, you know, basically gets us pretty close to what Lisa's position is. And I think that demonstrates our good faith in terms of trying to help the schools out with their hopeful bond issue they'll be proposing. I think it recognizes the fact the world economy and the national economy is still not particularly stable. And yet it also recognizes the fact that our city employees have been doing more and more with, with less and less over the years, and that just has to stop. I think we need to be realistic about what services we can provide, what our staff is capable of despite their hard work. So in addition to the fiscal and financial realities, we have to recognize the human sources realities. And I think adding these positions is a reasonable step in that direction. Hopefully, as the economy will improve, we can be a little bit more liberal in terms of that and augment the services that we provide because our citizens want them and need them. But again, summarizing for right now, I think the city council president's proposal is the most reasonable one and seems to balance best all of the different interests out there.
Any further discussion on the motion to amend? Last call for discussion on the motion to amend. Motion is to amend the original motion with the recommendations from the city council president. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
No.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion to amend is approved. We are back to the original motion now, and this is the 2021 budget, sorry, 2022 budget. For consideration, is there any further discussion? Alderwoman Olson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to just reference what Alderman Pitner has been saying for the last few weeks, you know, that we do need to be good community partners, and I agree 100% with him. I think that we do, and I think that as part of our conversation, we have all supported the need for a second high school for Minot Public Schools. And we didn't want to infringe on, on the opportunity for them to be able to, to pass a bond vote. And I'm hoping that with the, the passing of this budget on first and second reading, that we are still allowing for that opportunity. Again, taking care of what we need to take care of. I'll even quote Alderman Pitner from a previous meeting when he said, "We take care of our, our own house." And I think that in this budget, we're doing that, but we are also listening to the needs of the community, recognizing that there are other community projects that will be coming forward, and hopefully we're able to accomplish all of them. So, thank you.
One of the points, too, with some of the discussions I've had with folks out in the community, is that if we take a look at the cost of inflation that is going on right now in many other areas around the country, and even locally, this budget very well, if we are keeping inflation in mind, is doing more with less if you factor in inflation with what is going on. I think it would be, I think most folks would be very happy if we were able to add those, all of those positions to be able to provide even better service, whether it be being able to get streets clear much more quickly, or have better response times, and so on down the line. Given the times, absolutely, I think it's very prudent, to Alderman Pitner's point, to send the message loud and clear that we are doing our due diligence on this budget in anticipation of a bond that is coming forward for a second high school in Minot. And that couldn't be more important now, and we could talk hours on that. But I am going to support this budget. I did want to actually look over to Alderman Ross. You had a question before the meeting, and this was a question that was proposed, I believe, two years ago, when we had a very, I would say, much more stout proposed budget before us at $279 or $274 million. We were programming a lot of dollars in for flood control and NOS, specifically the pump stations. And one of the questions at those time, at that time, was, are we stuck to that elevation of spending now for here into perpetuity? That was actually, I think, one of the questions that one of the gentlemen had come up to the podium and asked. And for anyone who might be watching or re-watching this is, no. The $174 million that is proposed before us is not one of those dollar expenditures that we are stuck to moving forward forever. This is programming in a lot of flood control dollars, NDR dollars, and NOS dollars, and going back to what we actually draw from, from our property taxes, a little north of $26 million out of property taxes. So I just wanted clarification on that as well, because that, that's a great question that has come up in, in previous, as communities our size typically don't run budgets this large. But tip, communities our size typically also don't build generational projects at the same time either. So any further discussion on the motion to approve? Alderwoman Evans?
I just want to reiterate what Mr. Stewart said a few weeks ago, is that, like, this is a really great budget, right? Like, we are in this envious position of debating about the icing on the cake, right? Of 18 new positions, what positions are those? You know, many of our cities and colleagues across the country got much harder hit with COVID and are having to cut, you know, essential services in their communities. So I am just very thankful that we are not in that position, that we are able to keep our services and approve some of those services and not have to be in, you know, the very difficult position. Like I said, some of our colleagues are across the nation who are having to cut services and people. We are debating about who to add. So I'm just very thankful for that and glad that we are able to put forth a budget that continues all of the, the great city services people have come to expect, and also takes care of our staff and, you know, moves us forward and is consistent with our four aspirations that we as a council, you know, decided upon at our retreat. So that's just my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Further discussion on the motion to approve? Alderman Pitner?
Thank you, Mayor. Just again, I wanted to maybe reiterate some of the comments that had been said. This is a great budget. This is, there's a lot of good things happening in this budget. A lot of good things, a lot of infrastructure, a lot of, a lot of improvements to essential services, public safety. And again, I support those. The way that I view this budget is kind of like a trip to Disney World. You know, it's, it's really expensive, it's a lot of good things, you ought to have a lot of fun, you go on all the rides. And what we're debating about is buying some Mickey ears on the way out of the park, or some souvenirs at the shop. It's those last little icings on the cake that maybe as a dad, I just, I'm getting a little, little tight in the purse strings with some of those things, and I just don't want to see us walk out of there with those, at least this time. So again, just kind of how I process this stuff. A lot of good things in this budget. I support it with my, with my head, but with my heart, I think I'll vote no.
Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Pitner?
No.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We have eight point five I, the 22, 2022 proposed annual budget ordinance. Recommendation to council was to approve the 2022 budget ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janser, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Olson. Any discussion on the motion for the ordinance first reading? Any discussion? Final call. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
No.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We are now out of our action items into number nine, personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not part of our agenda this evening. One final call for public appearances. Seeing none, we will move into the miscellaneous and discussion items. Are there any items that need to be discussed for the good of the order this evening from council? Alderwoman Olson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few weeks ago, I said, "Please reach out to us, we want to hear from you." And I did hear from a few people, not many, but a few, that I did have some emails from, and I'm grateful for those. And I just want to have a reminder that this was the first reading in the budget, and we still have one more reading, so it's not too late. If you have an opinion on this, we want to hear. So there's your opportunity, there's your invitation.
Seeing no other discussion items, we are in line for adjournment.
So moved.
By Alderman Pitner, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.